Common Council Meeting to Order. Go please. Sutner.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Dunleavy.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Deefack.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Easter.
Here.
Schley.
Here.
Darnick.
Here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda would be the approval of the agenda with a few changes. I would like to move 9B up to in between 5 and 6. Between the examination of the minutes for Phil's course to come as key in regards to that item so he can leave that from both. And that would be the item wastewater UV systems bit. We'll move that up in between 5 and 6. And 6B. 6B. MF. And 10B would be moved to follow 12. If anyone's okay with that, a motion would be in order. Go please. Made the motions in the second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And I also want to make note that I will be a presiding officer and a voting member of the council this evening, just so that everyone is aware of that. To correspondence. I hope you had time to read it. We also have the correspondence on the legal memo regarding the mayor oral leave of absence. And I hope everyone had a chance to read that. There was a couple other items in there to read as well. Any questions on those? And we'll move on to the citizens forum. This is a chance for citizens to make comments. Please be courteous at all times. Remember that this is not meant to be an opportunity to make personal attacks on any city official. No action or lengthy discussions can take place as a result of the comments made at this time. And I would ask that you be courteous. And remember, this is the council chambers. Is there any citizens who care to speak? Yes, Mike.
First, I'd like to read a letter on behalf of Judy McGee. But before I do, I want to say this. You stress how much time you have taken off work to fill the position of interim mayor. And in the same breath, you criticize her for doing social events. In my opinion, if you had a sense of decency, you would ask Judy to do what she could to help you and the city for our social events, ribbon cuttings, et cetera. She is still the elected mayor. Now, I'll read her letter. I've read this once, so forgive me, it might be periods and stuff not the way they're supposed to be. This letter is in regard to my abs- my leave of absence and items from the city administrator's office. First, I would like to address my leave of absence. A number of you seem concerned about what I am doing while I'm leave. Resolution for the Lions Club was written prior to my leave. I was asked in September. I also chose to still attend the dinner as I had already RSVP. My Facebook page since day one is being kept up by another person who has paid to do so. I have chosen to do, I have chosen to have this individual continual keeping the public informed via Facebook during my absence. With regard to the day of the Green Bay Packers were in Clintonville, I chose to come and watch the events of the day. I was involved in the process from day one. When Jeannie Schley arrived in the afternoon, I introduced Kathy, the work director of community outreach and player alumni relations, and Tony Fisher, player alumni coordinator, to Jeannie Schley as acting mayor. I did not stand in front of Jeannie as implied by the Clintonville Chronicle. I stepped aside after making the introduction. I did come into the city hall one evening shortly after my leave to return something and pick up some personal papers. I've heard you talk about my keys and email and access to things. I remind you that when full-time employees had taken months off, that nothing of this sort was done. They still kept their city keys and access to things like email. The continual attacks on my, on me by a majority of you is exactly what I meant when I indicated my reasons for taking a leave. With regard to Lisa Carter's removal of and return of items, I would remind you to read the terms of resignation agreement that nine of you reviewed and agreed to. First, it was stated that Lisa was to work with me, not me plus another person regarding getting her things. It was not stated when the collection of items was to take place. I purposely chose to do, do it when no one was around out of respect for Lisa. Not to hide anything, I would not expect her or anyone else to be made to come to the city hall when other employees and the public are there to make a spectacle of her departure. I sat with her the entire time as she cleaned up her work area. I approved and saw anything that she took as her personal belongings. The thing we, the things we recycled were things that were nothing any employer would have kept. Lisa left a pile of items to be filed into permanent vault records. One pile was for Dawn, her Fawn, and one was for Peggy Johnson. When she left, she took two large pictures from the wall, they belonged to her, and two boxes of personal items. I would also remind you that part of why her desk was fairly empty was when her new desk arrived in December. She had taken four to five boxes of files to the vault. Those were still there throughout her absence. And the city hall staff is fully aware that Lisa regularly gave them files and papers to keep. The boxes that were placed in the vault were still there the day that I took leave of absence. City staff is also, city staff is also, no, has also known of those the boxes in the vault. Lisa and I did not take, did not take, destroy, or recycle any city documents that need to be kept for the city records. As a matter of fact, we did not destroy anything. Lisa did return a few items to me on September 13th. We had already locked up the building and so placed those items in the back of my vehicle. If there's something specific the council is looking for, please email me a list and I will respond. The items that I do have are the backpack that Lisa used to carry the laptop computer and the phone charger. I heard reference to desk calendars, and I spent many hours in Lisa's office past four years. She has never had a paper desk or wall calendar or a stapler. Fawn orders those, and I am certain she would tell the city council she never ordered such items for Lisa Carter. It disappoints me that someone in the city is giving out false information that such items existed in Lisa's office. The calendar on my desk was purchased by myself, just to be clear on a couple of other items. I have purchased all the ink cartridges for the printer in my office. I also purchased the plaques that I have given to employees. The cell phone that the city number is on and that I have was purchased by me, and I also paid 3464 a month to the city as my share of the cost of the plan that I went to when I recycled the flip phone that I had been using when I started as mayor. I also wanted to address how we got in the office. I have the one copy of the city administrator's office key that Lisa returned on July 8th. I think it is important for the city to realize that the city administrator's office was on lockdown, May 13th through June 2nd. This was not the keys July 8th through September 13th. When Lisa returned to her office with me to get her personal belongings, on June 3rd, all custodial and office keys were returned. Those keys were not collected begin on July 9th. Both full-time and summertime staff had access to clean, to the office to clean. The city hall staff opened the office every morning, and many meetings were conducted in there, and many people came in and out. I caution you to be careful when you suggest that only, only Lisa and I could have done, could have done things in there. I do not believe anything is truly missing. I do not believe that Lisa has taken or kept anything that belonged to the city. I also know that Lisa and I have followed a brief agreement regarding this issue. I am also appalled that Mary Beth Keister went through my office and desk looking for whatever. This I learned from listening to the tape of the council meeting. Since when does an elected official get to go through the mayor's office? The only person should be the acting mayor, Jeannie Schley. I also do not appreciate the Clintonville Chronicle not bothering to check for the other side of the story. You know you are not telling the whole truth, just one side of opinion. This letter will be added to my face pages after it is read at the council meeting November 11th. Sincerely, Judy McGee, still mayor. And I got copies of that, I'm gonna pass around in a second, but I got just a little bit yet on my own. It would be nice for the city council to stop the witch hunts. And as you state, tallying items you believe the mayor has done or is doing wrong, that is an action that is disgraceful as a council person. And by the way, all of the illegal acts and evolves that you guys have done by being on this council, I have never once heard an apology for. This clearly shows you are above the citizens, and they do not matter. Now with the budget, can somebody tell me tonight how much cash the budget, the city has in, can somebody tell me how much cash the city has in slush fund? Not assets that you could sell, but actual cash. Your scenario you have talked about is to take cash out of the cash slush fund to cover shortfalls in the future annual operating budget. As the school board found out not that long ago, it is not all cash, it is comprised of many assets as well, which makes such a large figure. As I listen to you discuss using this slush fund, it shows how unwilling you are to put forth the effort to truly balance the budget. If you use the fund this year, you are in fact running a structural deficit for the whole 2015 year. It does not make any sense. Find the problem and solve it. Don't take the easy way out. You're paying somebody $75 an hour to let you off the hook from doing your work. If there's such a slush fund, it was created by hard-working administration and council members prior to this year. Now, just to end, you guys know that things are tight, and there's a lot of buildings and a lot of roads that need fixing around here. And anything can happen anytime. This winter started pretty early. I'm sure Toby's sitting there thinking, this is cute, you know, I have no money, and this is, this is a start. You guys gotta think, how are we gonna do 2015 without taking out this slush fund? Thank you.
I just want to make one comment before anybody else comes up. Mary Beth, I don't think has ever been in the mayor's office. I don't think she's ever been issued the key. And when I went into the office the first day, when I took seat as acting mayor, I went in there with three other people. No one has rifled that office, so I don't know where that information came from. But to my knowledge, Mary Beth has never been in that office, even when I was in the office. I don't think you've ever been in the office. So that, that isn't a true statement. And maybe you would like a copy of the, this letter that we received, my, on the mayor oral release during leave of absence. The final paragraph reads, "It is also important to note that two people cannot actively serve the role of a mayor at the same time. While the mayor has taken a leave of absence, it is my opinion that the council president serves as the acting mayor and has all the duties and responsibilities of the mayor." And this is according to the Clintonville Municipal Code 2.01, parent six. Okay? Just so you're aware of that. And I am trying to fulfill going to other things as well.
Just read your letter.
I, I know, just trying to, because it's being taped and broadcast and everything, I think we should have a rebut on some of it because I know Mary Beth has never been in that office, so I think it's important to rebut that. Is there anyone else who care to speak? Yes, Brad.
That's you? That's you? That's you?
Brad Rokas, 213 North Clinton. My wife couldn't be here tonight, but she did want me to express some of her thoughts as well, and I do have some of my own. I also received a message that I'd like to kind of share. My wife just wanted me to pass along that she is also not in favor of taking money out of the undesignated fund balance to kind of balance next year's budget. She'd like to pass along her desire that you all just kind of dig in maybe a little deeper and make some of the, some of the decisions that are tough but need to be made to, to do it without digging in into that, that money. And to switch gears now, the balance as stated was around 1.7 million. From what digging that I was able to do, all I have is the 2006 numbers, we're at 1.1 million. So that's $600,000 more than the previous councils and the previous administration was able to add to that balance. But I still do not believe that that's cash. If it dated its assets, pay off its debt, it would have a 1.7 million to the good side. But that, I still do not believe that that's actually cash sitting in an account. To switch gears yet again, I'd like to talk about a topic that's been discussed a few different times with utility board and street committee as far as the on-call pay for the operators. The talk has been that that's a responsibility that could go back to the manager, and, and that's fine. However, it makes it more, that's not a deal breaker, but it makes it a little bit more difficult to bring a new manager into the city with added responsibilities. And also, in the current day and age of health insurance rising, out-of-pocket deductibles going up, wages staying stagnant, you are now basically giving pay cuts to your current employees by taking the on-call pay away from them. Mr. Kell had stated that the on-call package is robust compared to what he's used to in Whiting. I worked for Mr. Kell in Whiting. It is robust compared to that, because the wages in Whiting, in my opinion, were not at market value. When I started there, I made less money than I could have been making at Taco Bell by $1.20 an hour. However, there's, doing your legwork to comparing it to what other communities have is important, but you're not paying those people that on-call money for them to sit at home and do nothing. You're buying their availability, you're buying them out of time that they could spend with their families in different cities because they have to stay within their response area, their response time. In some cases, you're purchasing their sobriety, but you're buying their availability, because they, they cannot respond, report in if they've had anything to drink. You wouldn't want them to anyway for insurance purposes. You have a small skeleton crew here within the city. The more people that become unavailable, the harder it is to get things done. And at those times when you need to get people in the middle of the night, it's not because things are going smoothly. A lot of times, it's all hands on deck, we need everyone we can get to get things done. You have an aging wastewater plant, I'm happy to see the steps forward to making that a more modern facility. You have a fairly modern water facility, but it's, you still have aging pipes and aging infrastructure, blowground. You need people to respond to those situations. And to basically give them a wage cut, what is their incentive to report? And if you do have a manager that it's his responsibility to be on call, that's fine. He's not gonna be able to do the work by himself. He's gonna answer the phone, he's gonna get on the phone and try to coordinate efforts. And if you're taking money out of the pockets of your existing employees, he's not gonna be able to get anybody to rally to the cause. Your employees are very valuable. I know we don't want to cut wages, I know we don't want to eliminate employees, but by removing the on-call portion, you are cutting wages. And it, it's another step to demoralize your current staff. And regardless of which direction the city goes, what road you're on, you need their support, you need their efforts. These aren't just, these aren't just jobs for these people, these are careers. Utility workers, workers especially are a different breed. They do it because of the love of the work. There's other communities out there that are hiring every day for utility workers. And there's other communities out there that, within the driving distance, that are paying more. I think it would be irresponsible just to devalue the employees that you have and tell them that you can pay more, we're gonna pay you less. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Stephanie? Yeah?
Stephanie Hens, and I live in the town of DuPont. First, I want to say thank you to everybody for working so hard on the budget. I think it's really showing a lot of improvement on working together, and I just want to say thank you. And I'm just gonna kind of refer off and make these notes, and I'm gonna ask that before you, the Clintonville Common Council, make your final decision to close the pool this year or in the future, you have a concrete plan or at the minimum, a documented commitment to the community too. I'm gonna outline about four different things and a few other interesting things. Number one, for future action, put the question relating to whether the community desires and will support a new outdoor product center within the next four years on an advisory referendum item this April, and then the council would make their decision to proceed. Number two, for action, that would not be involving asking for any, any money or any approval at that sense. Number two for action, should the council decide to close existing pool indefinitely for 2014 and save their current losses, please allow a small amount to be reserved for a concept plan for new aquatic center. I feel due to the information provided in the 2014 comprehensive outdoor recreation five-year plan that this council approved in April of this year seems to have gotten lost and forgotten in the budget shuffle. Although the city is not mandated to follow the plan to a T, there is valuable information in there, including survey data that shows overwhelming support for an outdoor pool, two-thirds at that time, and that was with no threat of closure imminent, and less of a desire and need for additional ball fields. The plan also identifies that the demand for outdoor water parks is stable. This is info some of your constituents have already provided you and work that was done with the East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. The report also says with this plan, city can once again apply for matching funds through the DNR stewardship program if available, along with other DNR grants. The timetable and the action program in the comprehensive plan that you approved is earmarked for 2014 through 2016, which is now, and is based on reports generated from need, resident recommendations, and surveys. I think the imminent loss of the community's beloved pool is worth that even in its tough times. Number three, for future action, the council or authorizing entity establishes a volunteer community pool subcommittee that could be anchored through Park and Rec with recommendations on coming back through Park and Rec to council if desired. Number four, this is just my opinion, I do not feel it is fair or appropriate to not have these items discussed without the Park and Recreation Committee before a significant change at the council level, as we have been hearing discussions on, nor essentially in any committee. The Park and Rec Department may have a different perspective other than what finance would consider. Their October meeting was not held and the November 1st is not until the 25th. Nobody contacted me through Park and Rec, this was just my own opinion and my own observations. What I drummed up with very little additional effort, I did speak with Steve Carncross through Newman Pools, who actually works also with their sister company, Water Technologies, based out of Beaver Dam. They're a design-build firm. Steve is director of pre-construction. Newman Pools alone, this is just one part of the business, last year did annual volume of 10 to 20 million. And some of their projects recently include the YMCA and Beaver Dam and the Ray and Joan Crox Center in Green Bay, which is LEED certified. Newman Pools, they were very excited and willing to get any information we could provide for our project, pushed through the right people right from the engineering level and directed me right to engineering. What Steve said part of the process would be, typically what they do for municipal projects is they would start by providing a flat or concept fee, a pre-designed project that would include some things like municipal pool and design. They are familiar with process and barriers within the municipal market and can give us the tools and help us decide which path to take. They can provide reasonable budgets so that you as a council can work through and decide what's a good fit and what's not a good fit. They can start with aquatic engineering through Water Technologies, or really essentially anybody, establishing engineering costs versus probable costs, provide concept drawings for council and for the community to look at, and then hire out for final engineering. I don't have a price or any information on that, but some info that Justin has shared through another company, which I'm sure is very similar in its process, is about $5,000 to $10,000 for that. They, Water Technologies also is familiar with working with municipalities, and they also work collaboratively with the State of Wisconsin, which means you know you would be adhering to appropriate standards. Here's some proof, and this is not just on their project, this is other municipal projects in Wisconsin. Stats at the Sun River Aquatic Center with the renovation, they increased their revenue by 33%, and home sales in the community increased, especially those within walking center of the facility. Within the three, first three months of opening, attendance nearly tripled. At Yaz Water World, they put in 16 innovative filters that use 75% less space, 90% less water, 30% less chemicals, and 50% less electrical energy. And New Holstein, right here in Wisconsin, they had an aging municipal, municipal pool built in 1961, very similar to us. In 2010, they had a population of 3,300 people. In 2004, they decided they had to do something, so the common council agreed and created a pool committee and appointed 16 members, which is a lot, who got proposals from three different companies. Once narrowed down, the next year, they focused on a comprehensive study and plan, and in May 2007, the committee approved the plan. Construction began in 2008, was completed in 2009, and it cost $2.5 million. The city of New Holstein endorses their new aquatic facility right on their own website and says it is a very important amenity that is needed in their community. The aquatic center provides swimming lessons for both children and adults living in the area and offers an attractive outdoor recreation amenity to individuals considering making New Holstein their home. Neighboring communities have indoor facilities, thus an outdoor facility sets us apart from them. That's their words. And continues to help make New Holstein a viable city for families looking for a community to live, work, and play in. In fact, Parkview Estates, a subdivision established by Hillcrest Builders in New Holstein, advertises the pool as a reason to build with them and live there. Homefinder.com and online real estate search source. Homefinder.com and online real estate search source also promotes the pool as a community amenity. The city has set up a capital fundraising campaign to help pay for the project. The committee has worked hard developing the new aquatic center plan and is excited and committing, and was excited and committed to building the center. Naming rights for the aquatic center, bathhouse lies, and many other features are available and have been made available to anyone interested in making a significant contribution. And the way they do it is every gift of five hundred dollars or more, they permanently are recognized on a plaque located inside their aquatic center. New Holstein also has a very nice 2011 Economic Development Strategic Plan you can find online, which is very, very interesting. Some of it related, some of it not. In Elkhorn, anybody's familiar where that is, kind of by the Wisconsin, Lake Geneva area, in 2013, voters overwhelmingly passed a three and a half, or passed advisory referendum, much like I suggested, for an aquatic center to replace their sixty-year-old pool, whose last renovation was also in the nineteen eighties. This was after the common council was split on the decision to close for good faced with similar problems with Clintonville. The common council had the final say in the decision that would, that went past would have ultimately cost the average homeowner thirty-eight dollars for the duration of a ten-year loan, or a smidge over ten cents per day, and came from the city's seven and a half million dollar capital improvements budget at that time. The estimate to demolish and fill the existing pool and leave as just a grass base was at two hundred thousand dollars. The pool is expected to open in 2015. I just wanted to share some of that information with you prior to any further discussions regarding the pool. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anyone else care to speak?
Hello, everyone. I recently heard, you know, my name-
Say your name and address.
Timothy Zeltz, Ninth, Ten Street, Clintonville. And yes, I'm still here. The scumbag is, is the closing of the old armory. And a lot of citizens have been calling me, and I've been talking to them, and they're kind of wondering, well, where are they going to go, you know, for the food pantry? And so I just, you know, and I, I don't know if you guys are going to close it or what's going to go on with it, but if you do, please be considerate and maybe help out the people that run the food pantry, to help them find another place where they can run, because I know there's a lot of citizens in this town that depend on it. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? Anyone else? We'll close the citizens forum. Next on the agenda will be examination of minutes from October fourteenth, October twenty-first, and October twenty-eighth. Motion to approve those minutes with the order. Go. Do you have a second? A second. Mary Beth, Gloria. Any other comments, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. And this is where we're moving IMI D. Let Phil Gold come and give his presentation on the wastewater UBS to bids.
Thank you. I'm Phil Gold with Volt. This afternoon, we opened bids for replacing the existing UVS Ultraviolet Disinfection System at the wastewater precinct. The disinfection season runs from May first through September thirtieth. Staff there operate us to improve the design, intent that we get this equipment replaced before the next disinfection season, when we're operational in mid-April. So, we got three bids. In there, the equipment was running around a hundred, hundred-some thousand dollars. Expected bid to be somewhere under two hundred thousand dollars. Good news is the bids range from one fifty-seven thousand to one eighty, August winters. The whole bid at a hundred fifty-seven thousand, four sixty-five. Hope you got any information on that. Got the bid here. We'll do a formal review of this. Did a review today. They've submitted everything that they were supposed to. They're a qualified contractor. We've worked with them a lot. They've done a lot of wastewater work. And we're looking for a motion here to award that project to them and move ahead with the signed agreements and getting into construction. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Did that the street turn or no?
Well, we can make the motion now and then have discussion.
I just was asking if he was going to do it as chairman. We didn't make, I didn't make the motion in the street committee, so I'll make the motion that the street committee recommends that we go ahead and approve this bid with the condition that they're going to review it, and then they'll come back to us with the signed bid, but we would approve the bid while pending review for our potter way of deciding.
And do I have a second?
Let's look at that.
And we'll open for discussion? Does anyone have any questions? I see there's a little bid. Does anyone have any? Yes?
I should say that it's nice to see something that came in lower.
I was pleasantly surprised with the bids, yes.
They already said two hundred and it's one fifty-seven, so that was one way for me to see that.
Does anyone else have any questions on it? Then you're just going to be reviewing this to make sure-
Review this. I'll correspond with Chuck here, or we'll send the correspondents saying we reviewed this and make the recommendation, help you with the paperwork and the notice of award and sign the agreements and move ahead with the construction.
Hearing no questions? Yes.
What do you think, why that bid convinced so much, were not available for these guys? And whether they could go?
I'm not sure it's a little bit, but they always, the equipment's, like I said, about a hundred and eight thousand in bid here, and they actually said about fifty thousand dollars for doing the installation, electrical, a little bit of concrete work. It's not a lot, but it must be competitive, that's why, you know, if they had plenty of work, they would have put in a higher bid, so at least we got the bids like that. And the bids were consistent. We get two other pretty little bids involved.
I was just asked about when they did some work for, when I worked for Murphy's, August winter, they did.
Yeah, they're very experienced in wastewater, so we're happy to have them.
Any other comments or questions? Rocco, please.
Snyder?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Dan Lucky?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steenbuck?
Yes.
Milston?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Slide?
Yes.
Doorneck?
Yes.
Next, we'll move to IM six eight. Yes, and I can tell you, I already talked to Toby, and we're in the process of having him sign him through. Chuck and I were discussing this after the budget's done, as far as what we would like to proceed with. The city would like some direction as to what regards to projects to work on and what kind of work program we would like to propose to the designers that the administrator will work on.
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. You didn't know I was coming. I don't know how many of you are aware, but with this microphone system, we can't hear half of what you folks are saying. I don't know if it's the microphones that are in disrepair, or if you're just not getting close enough. But we have an awful lot of mumble, mumble, mumble back here, and I'm not the only one that can only hear a quarter of what you folks are saying unless nobody really cares.
Could you hear me? Because I'm kind of far away from the microphone.
You only hear half of what you say. You don't project. And nobody really projects. It's like, you don't really want us to know what you're doing. You're just showing up and talking amongst yourselves.
I don't think that's true. I think you just weren't aware of the fact that the microphones aren't working.
Okay, I got up once before, and this man here told me to sit down. And I brought the same thing to your attention then. And nothing's been remedied. So for what it's worth to you folks who are elected by the city and are being paid to be here, possibly you might let the rest of us know what you're saying. It would be appreciated by the residents of the city.
While we speak, we need to speak more clearly into the microphones. Okay? Then we are, we're talking about the city administrators, what we would, yes, Greg.
My recommendations for Chuck and some of the things to look at, I know that our employee handbook is in need of updating, and there's a number of things that have changed in terms of just simply updating technology that's written in there that's very outdated. Act Ten was a significant change. There's been changes to healthcare, and so there's, there's much work to be done in terms of the employee handbook, and I would also like to see more defined job descriptions for some of the employees that perhaps have pretty good direction as to what they need to do, but it's not written down on, you know, in paper. So, those are two things that I know need to be done.
Yes, Marika.
I was going to suggest the handbook as well, so I echoed that. Also, there's follow-up, I think, going to be done on the insurance, that we do have to follow up, because we're going to look into the state insurance. And then Chuck also mentioned, we don't have, we don't have any plan in place for evaluation of employees, annual evaluation of employees, and regular evaluation of employees. And then some of the things that he said, having worked with financial advisors, some of the things he's already noticed that we haven't been doing that we can be doing. So I think when we have time after the budget, he can go over some of our procedures. But I think, as Greg said, the employee handbook is, I think it's two thousand and, was it two thousand and one or two thousand, two thousand and one was the last time it was updated. Then evaluation, regular evaluations of employees, and then also follow-up on insurance, you know, that we can get something cheaper at the interim.
Job descriptions. Does anyone else?
I guess, can you hear me? I project, I think. I'm thinking about the, to actually actively start looking for a city administrator replacement. So while Chuck is here, he can actually kind of help lead, somebody lead the way for them a little bit. So I'm thinking that that probably should be put out there, and we actively look.
Anyone else? Yes?
There any suggestion for the timetable in which you'd like to have a new administrator hired? Is as soon as possible, or?
Well, can I continue? I would think probably while you're still, while you still have the time while you're here, so I would like to see someone in place as soon as possible. I, I mean, I don't know how much experience we're going to get. I believe in probably December, there's going to be new grads, and that if you would be willing to help them out a bit, I think it would be an awesome opportunity for someone younger to step in and learn from someone who has a lot of experience and get some of the ropes. I mean, and that's just a suggestion, but I would like to see someone in place as soon as possible, not only for us, but also for you, Chuck, because, I mean, you can't stay with us forever.
Yes, Greg.
Two things. Before we look at hiring a new city administrator, the job description for the city administrator position needs to be updated as well, so to reflect more current times there as well, because that's part of that same handbook and whatnot that is outdated. And then the other thing was, I heard some chuckling from the back of the room when you stated that new grads are coming out. But just for clarification, this is a position that, that will probably require significant college education, master's degrees and so forth, and a lot of people are going back to work, and so that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to be looking for somebody who's twenty-four years old or something like that. It could be somebody that's middle-aged and looking for a second career, so, you know, I don't think that, that what Gloria said was being possibly construed correctly.
Yes, Marika.
The one constraint we have is that the budget constraint, because, you know, we will be, essentially would be paying double until May, and so one thing we talked about when Chuck came is that he isn't going to be putting in the time he's putting in now because we needed him desperately to get the budget. But if he could, if he could work on a more skeleton basis so we could continue to save money, I guess I would say, agreeing with Greg, that we do need the job description first, but I wouldn't be in that much of a rush if we're, if we can get along on a decreased budget. And I would remind that our previous administrator had one year's experience. She had just finished her master's degree. She had one year experience. She was one year out of, out of college. So, you know, that, that was a one-year experience, so it wasn't unforeseen.
And I guess when you talk about the job description, Greg, we also have to make that mirror in municipal code, because I don't think right now they jive completely. So we need to get, I mean, there's lots of steps that we have to get through before we can hire someone to get all this stuff in order. So it could take, I know Chuck plans on being here till March, right?
If need be.
Okay. So, because a lot of this stuff takes time, just to keep all the process of going through all the committees and such. So that could take a few months as well. Is there anything else anyone has to suggest? Do we need to make motions on this, or we're just giving direction right now? Just direction, sounds good.
Consensus on that?
We all agree pretty much. Anyone think of anything else that comes to mind? Well, if you think of anything, you can always just give me a call, and I can discuss it with Chuck as well. Okay? And then we will move on to update on the status of the Graceland Cemetery. Is there any? There really is no update. I think we discussed this, that there is no update yet.
No, we-
Is there?
We can give you a minor update, I guess. The city staff have been made aware that the Graceland Cemetery has been experiencing some financial difficulties in their operation of the cemetery, which is located on city-owned property, was originally established on city-owned property. And so we've had a couple of meetings with them to discuss their budgets and their, their expenses and the situation that they're facing. It looks like they may be able to make it through this, this year, 2014. In closely balanced their expenses and revenues for the year, we are prepared to potentially help them out if necessary. If you're not aware, the city already budgeted seven thousand dollars of financial support for that operation. And in the budget projections for this year, we increased that by fifteen hundred, knowing that they were going to have a very tight year in terms of getting through to the end of 2014. We in fact met with them on Monday, and as an example, they ran about an eighteen hundred dollar deficit in the month of October. And October, they're already starting on their downward trend of expenses for the year, so that's kind of an indication of the situation they're facing. Under state statutes, if the cemetery association can't make that operation go, it basically falls back on the city to take care of the property and everything involved with the management and operation of that cemetery. And we didn't want the council and the community to face a situation where you might be faced with taking that operation over in a thirty or six- you might be faced with taking that operation over in a 30 or 60-day notice. So we've been trying to be a little proactive on this and dealing with them. And we're working on a transition plan whereby we'll work with them throughout the course of 2015. We've got a projected budget increase in the 2015 budget of up to $15,000 to help them financially. And we've been talking with city departments about how we might be able to help them through the year if their budget gets, gets tight in 2015 to hopefully make them solvent through the entire year in 2015. We're looking at such things as taking over accounting. We're looking at insurance on the property. We're looking at potential Parks Department having to help them out, perhaps with some lawn and grass cutting. All things that may be necessary in order to make that operation successful next year. The ultimate plan, transition plan then would be looking at the city taking over the total management of the facility in 2016. And so, 2015 will be a learning time and learning experience for our staff, Parks Department in terms of what their demands will be to take care of a facility like that in-house in terms of, you know, the accounting, actually taking calls for the purchase of grave sites, that type of thing. And also working with their sexton would have the experience of the cemetery layout and how the graves are set up and dug and that whole operation. So that'll be a learning experience through the course of 2015. And we fully expect, based on what we've seen with their budget and what we've heard from, from the commission, that the community will be faced with accepting and operating that operation probably entirely starting in 2016. Things could change. I mean, if they have a real good year financially in terms of revenues, you know, things could potentially change a little bit on that schedule. But it doesn't appear that that's gonna be the case. With the, the way people, there's, there's less and less people being buried in cemeteries these days. There's a lot more cremation taking place and other, other methods of burial. So the revenue stream has, has dried up significantly over what it was in the past. And of course, expenses because they have labor and gas, you know, for further escholat over the years. And it's, the two curves are going the wrong direction. So that's what we're working on. We're trying to make this as easy on the community as it can be financially and also in terms of workload and those types of things. It's not something we necessarily look forward to in light of budget issues. You know, that's a whole new expense that you weren't really planning on. But I think it's an expense that you're gonna be facing based on what we've seen and, you know, reading the tea leaves of what's happening there. I don't know if you have any questions. I don't have a whole lot more detail at this point. Like I said, we'll, we'll report more to the council as, as this develops. As we, no information, but that's kind of where it's at right now.
Yes, Mary Beth.
Deanie knows, I've been asking, this has never appeared on the council agenda. One comment was made by Mayor Judy McGee just saying that, that there had been a meeting. And in the meantime, I've been hearing a lot of discussion, a lot of things from cemetery board members. We do know that there is a cemetery board of, I think, 12 members, all of whom, you know, receive a stipend and they meet monthly. And I've been told by several members that the, the thing that they do want is they want the city to pay the money, but they want no oversight. There'd be no council member, if no council member is on that board. Deanie said she was on it at one time, but they said that's not the case. And what's forcing this is their employee, they do, they are required by the new law that they have to provide insurance for their sexton. So that's one of their big insurances. So consequently, I'm concerned that this has never come before the council. I did research with, because the cemetery board told me Hortonville and Inshano have had this experience. Hortonville got the cemetery because their cemetery commission just disbanded and then by law, they got it. They said they had no problem with it. The city administrator at Inshano said, Hortonville said, they said, the clerk told me that they, he didn't want to be responsible for it. So the city clerk issues the permits for the cemetery. And Inshano, they started out, and in Hortonville, it's in the Department of Public Works. Inshano had started out in the Department of Public Works 12 years ago, 10 or 12 years ago. They've had it that long. And they said now it's in Park and Rec. And the only complaints they've had, the only problems they've had, sometimes some people say the cemetery, the grass hasn't been cut often enough, but they said it's, it's going just fine. It hasn't been, obviously there's a budget, a budget impact. But I would like this to be a consideration of the council to discuss. If this is, if this is coming, you know, and, and the management is, is not there. I mean, this is, it's either now or never. I think we put the money in the budget, but there's never been a discussion here about this situation till tonight. We just know, you know, there were rumors that there have been meetings with the cemetery board. And I think from talking to the other communities, it's something that they've done. And if it has to be, are you talking about you're gonna continue keeping the cemetery board the way it is? And keep paying those people for administering, paying a secretary, paying a treasurer? You know, I think this body has to discuss the possibilities.
Well, a couple of things, a couple of clarifications. I do not believe, and many of us do not believe, that they'll be responsible for health insurance. The federal law says that any employer with 50 or more people has to provide insurance. And there's many small businesses that are not required to. So I do not believe that's gonna be an issue for them.
And they know that.
Right. The board itself is talking about dissolving. They're not talking about staying in place. They will continue to stay in place during 2015 as we do this transition. But ultimately, they're talking about dissolving and basically turning the entire responsibility over to the city. So, the city council will become the cemetery board or perhaps you will create a committee of the council to, you know, deal with that. So, and I, I didn't sense, we've asked that question, we've asked the question relative to the staff. And we've asked the question relative to the board members, if there's gonna be any issues relative to that. Because we, you know, this was not about getting into a fight over who's gonna manage something and, and who's gonna make decisions. And they've been very forthwith with saying that they know they need to dissolve. And they will dissolve when, when it's necessary to do so. So, I think that'll all be part of this process. And certainly, there are many issues that this council will have to talk about relative to that. I mean, we're not to that point Jim. We're still really gathering information, trying to figure out how we might proceed. But as an example, I've asked Justin, Parks Director, to check with some of the communities that have taken over cemeteries and talk with their departments, start gathering information on issues and concerns that we need to be aware of. So, we're, we're getting, trying to stay out of the game here and hopefully make this, you know, not so traumatic when, when it has to happen. And so that's where that's at.
I just have one further question, if I may. Are you thinking, you're, you're right now, you haven't thought Parks and Rec or Department of Public Works?
Well, not, not really, but they both, they both are intending to help out. We already plow the cemetery, so Public Works is already very involved. And I think, you know, in talking with Toby and Justin, Toby doesn't want to get into more grass cutting. He thinks that that's, and I think Justin, you know, Parks and Rec is really the department that handles that type of thing. So, it's likely to be a shared responsibility, but there'll have to be one lead department in terms of, you know, who's really responsible for the management of it.
Can I just want to talk? Yeah, and, you know, when talking to the two that were the ones that I was referred to by the cemetery group, they had said that the, the administration is city hall and it's the clerk or the administrator in those cases. And I said, oh my gosh. But, but I didn't know Hortonville had an administrator, but they do. But so somebody would have to, you know, obviously be in charge because otherwise we're splitting it between two. I guess somebody had to be in charge. And Toby knows how to dig graves, so I think that'd probably be in his jurisdiction. But thank you for the information. Then he does, yeah.
Just a couple of other things I want the council to be aware of. We've had a number, I think three inquiries in the last two weeks on revolving loan fund money. Two of those would be businesses that are looking to try and establish an existing facilities in the community. And one would be an improvement in an existing business. So I've met with these individuals and they have the materials in their hands and will follow up as appropriate on that. We also have a application that's been submitted for some tourism funds for an event that's gonna be held next February in the community. Last week, late last week, we received a retirement notice from Darryl Teal in the wastewater department that he will be retiring and come the first of this year. So we've set in motion the things that need to be done to hire a new operator to take his place. Darryl worked for the community for 35 years, so certainly put his time in and he just felt that the time was right to look at retirement. And I'm not so sure that a lot, you know, a lot of discussions about what might happen with the departments and reorganization, that type of thing. May have played somewhat into his thinking on that. I think that's... I think that's all I need to bring up tonight.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mary Beth, you said there's a, is the, Mayor McGee was the chairman of the tourism committee, so is the tourism gonna meet on that request?
We will be in a, in a couple of weeks. I've been looking at the application and I may go back to the applicant, suggest some alternative ways of submitting it that I think might be received a little more positively than the way it's currently structured, so.
No, we need, we don't, we talked about, we would like to have regular meetings, but we haven't been, so maybe we can do that again.
Then we'll move on to seven eight, discussion for alternatives. I know that this was around finance and then Monday afternoon, 13th meeting in finance. We were moving this to March 2015, so that's where it was standing.
Yeah, I, I, this is a different issue. I had approached the chairman of the streets committee, which was what had been in charge of garbage collection before. And he suggested that it was gonna be on the March meeting in finance. But since it's a different twist, I had wanted us to discuss it. And there are three members of the street committee, myself and Jim and Greg are bringing forth this proposal. So we said, well, we would bring it to the council and we thought it was more appropriate to do it in streets, but he declined. So, well, our idea was that we would not have, we're not reinstating the garbage collection as a service to taxpayers. As you know, there are four different garbage collection services that are now patrolling the streets of Clintonville at all hours of the day and night. And Toby's aware that, you know, they're destroying our streets with all this traffic because they, they all have to go past every house. So I was talking with Toby about this idea. And the idea would be, rather than my, my and the rest of you, I pay $600 approximately a year to waste management and people are paying to these things, we would offer this as a city service. So instead of having it, we're not gonna put it back on the tax rolls, but we would have an alternative, you could, you could hire the Clintonville service. Then we wouldn't have four alternative trucks going down the streets. And Toby had said that, he thought it was, you know, would be a, definitely we could do it cheaper than the commercial companies and we could still make money. And I have, I've gotten up by there, he said he had thought, there's money in garbage in old people we, we know. So, we thought this would be an idea that people have said that they would like. Nursing homes are not linked. So we were thinking, he said, you know, we have to have a truck, you know, so we're just exploring this now. We have to have a truck and he thought one employee, but it was something we could very easily handle. That way we were giving a job to someone in Clintonville. The money would be staying in Clintonville. It could be cheaper because now my truck comes from Warsaw. He knows where we would haul this stuff. And I did talk with Greg, who's on the cause board, and we do have an obligation there. Would not interfere with that. So, but I wanted, we, the, the three of us and Toby wanted to throw this out as a discussion. And I believe it belongs in street, but I wanted to bring it up since we weren't able to put it on the agenda. So we'd like to pursue that idea. Obviously, we need to have more refinements. We need to find out how many people in Clintonville are using the form various services and how much they're paying. But as I said, Toby's more expert than I am, but he thought that it would, it could be something that could pay.
Well, it would appear that if we don't force people to do this, we now have five trucks running up and down every street. I don't know if that achieves the goal. The purpose of it was between street, then I went to Jerry Jorgensen and finance, myself. I guess, you know, rock, paper, scissors, we're in finance because it involves money. The full intent of the finance committee was to gather this information. Staff did start, but due to the happenings of this summer, the events that went through the administration staff this summer, those things did not follow through, so we didn't have time. The intent was to collect that information, just as Mary Beth is suggesting. But if we do that in March, well, they'd actually start in February, giving staff time to get through tax season, start in February and bring it into March. So I'm not, I guess I'm confused. Where are we gonna pull this resource from? It was tabled, it was not tabled, it was held over until that time for a very specific reason.
Yes, Greg.
The only reason why I would consider looking at this right now is just to float out a different idea and Mary Beth had done the legwork on figuring this one out and talking with Toby. So, I agree with Mark that if Clintonville hypothetically had their own truck, it would be a fifth truck. The logic behind this idea, which can be explored further, I think that at this point, that's all it is, is just exploration. It's not like we're setting this forward with motion tonight or anything. But if Clintonville could find a solution that was substantially lower than the other four haulers, then potentially, you know, you look at the logic of people are going to go with the least expensive hauler, that we could lower the number of haulers here, perhaps down two, one or two. So, I, I think at this point in time, it's just really in the early goings. And I think that we should just kind of put it on that, that back burner and roll around some ideas so that as finance and, and street get moving on this, that this is another option to consider. So, that's as far as I think we can take it at this point.
Yes, Mary Beth.
When I originally suggested that I put it on the agenda, originally when I put it on the agenda, I didn't, we didn't have, we hadn't discussed this idea of have, you know, getting, getting a truck. I think, maybe at that time I was thinking, you know, looking into maybe going back to having Clintonville do it. But with the budget constraints, and I've talked to a number of people, Lynn Jepson was one, said you gotta be careful, you know, cost of employees and so forth. So, I've been doing some thinking. So this was a new twist that we were talking about actually having a Clintonville, you know, having a pay-for-service. So that was the new, the new wrinkle that I wanted to present. So if we're that, I didn't realize that, you know, we're that swamped with ideas that we, we can't even discuss a new idea. Because I think it gives the people something. One of the questions that I had when I was campaigning, this was brought up to me as something I should look at. So I'm really fulfilling a campaign promise to look into the fact that there are four trucks going up and down our streets and can we do something different on garbage? So I'd like us to pay attention to it.
Yeah. So, if you remember the painful meeting we went through, all the expenditures changed. We were, we were finding $500 here and $1,000 there to get under operating. This would be probably $100,000 into our operating budget in the wrong direction. But, you know, so when we add it, yes, it could generate revenue, but we just gotta keep that in mind that when you expand services, like cemetery, we get the operation of that. We absorb that into the operating budget, but we don't need to change our operating service. Whether or not this is a new service provided, we have to change operating. We have to investigate that. But I agree with Greg, it was backburnered for a reason. We need to focus on the budget and was gonna pick up as soon as staff. There was a staff recommendation of when we pick it up. If not being ignored, we just have to do things with priority. That's what priority was decided on by recommendation for finance.
Is there any other comments on that? That's just discussion then. Then we will, Chuck, do you wanna make notes? One issue's in January or something, too.
You adding things to the list?
Yeah, listen, give me a minute. Thank you. Any other direction on that as well? We will move to finance and insurance committee.
Finance and insurance committee, financial report is recommending payment of the bills in the amount of $1,009,244.
I'll second that. Is there any other... Questions? Here's done, Rocco, please.
Gross.
Yes.
Dunleavy. Yes. Rapp.
Yes.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Keister.
Yes.
Schley.
Yes.
Dornick.
Yes.
Ziner.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Eight C, finance insurance committee is recommending to the council a denial of the appeal of the operator's license for Joseph Clarkson.
I'll second that.
Any other comments, questions? Rocco, please.
Dunleavy. Yes. Rapp.
Yes.
Steenbuck.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Keister.
Yes.
Schley.
Yes.
Dornick.
Yes.
Ziner.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Dunleavy.
Yes.
Eight D, it was brought to our attention that there are time clocks that can be sold or purchased, and finance insurance committee discussed that, and would like to declare them surplus and advertise that to be sold to the council.
I'll second. I guess I should ask this last night, are we putting that on to, what are we selling them? And are we going to put, yes?
I believe the staff incentive sites, Wisconsin surplus, and they advertise that.
Maybe, you know, within utility, we usually put minimum bid on things, and I don't know, it's just a suggestion. Yes?
I'm not clear enough with the time clocks and say that.
Yeah, I know.
I want to put a minimum bid on something that...
Yeah, we don't know it.
I think we trust our staff, the total value of, I think, was maybe $900 or four.
$2.75 a piece.
$2.75 times...
$1100.
So I'll trust the staff to get as much money as we can for that. Is it not doing?
Right. Okay. This is money. Rocco, please.
Steenbuck. Yes. Wilson.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Keister.
Yes.
Schley.
Yes.
Dornick.
Yes.
Ziner.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Dunleavy.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
All right, eight E, this came from finance committee, there is a motion that passed that would reduce the council pay by, for 2015. For the 2015 budget. Who else?
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any other comments or questions?
Yes, Gloria. Okay, I just got a question. How does this, now, from what I was understanding before, I thought it was going to be for when you're elected? It goes into effect? So how is that, okay, that'll work then?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, please.
It would be a number of 28,000. Only half of this council or this body will be reelected in the spring election, and so then it would be half of 28, and you'd already be save a third of the way into the budget cycle, so it would affect only two-thirds of, we'd be able to save two-thirds of what we, of something, we're looking for, but yes, the cycle of reelection has to happen in order for that to change, whether it's an increase or decrease.
Yes, Mary Beth.
I wasn't at the last finance committee, unfortunately, but the meeting before, we discussed whether or not the salary of the council members has any effect on whether people will accept that position. And at the last meeting, we had felt that it does, particularly for younger people. And so I had said that you're certainly welcome to donate your money back to the city, I do that, but you can do that, but I think people should have the option. Then I also did bring out, when we just considered it, are we considering having the mayor's salary as well?
Yes.
Just a point of clarification, it was discussed by one councilor's opinion that it, when you already said it was a deterrent or encouraging, that was your word, there was, that's one.
Gloria.
And I wasn't aware of any donations, and I see in the budget of, from salary being donated back to the city.
I think that your market, too, they wanted to go, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yes, Mary Beth.
Your market, I sent mine, I happened to send mine to the school, which is the same, is the same, I mean, it's taxpayers, so that's where I had to send it this year, I decide where I would send it.
But wasn't donated back to the city.
Right. To the taxpayers, is what I said.
Yes, Greg.
So this is a 50% reduction, correct? And how did we determine that number? Was it kind of like a compromise of the committee that recognized, you know, because there's logic on both ends. We want to make good on our budget, we want to cut costs where we can, and we recognize that this is a place where costs could be cut. But at the same time, the logic of you need to provide some sort of payment for service, and so was it, was that how the committee viewed it?
Yes, Mark.
It was a dart that I threw as a start, as a discussion point, I said I'd throw it half, because it would at least leave some money in there, and so yes, it was a compromise, at least from my thought of what I thought might be the most palatable to get passed. And it was a way that we could do something as well. Every place has taken a cut. We've got more to cut, this is just another area that we could, and we have control over. So that's basically where I started.
Does anyone else have anything to say? No, Mary Beth?
How long has the council salary been at this particular rate? I know that there was a raise given for committee meetings from $10 to $25, but this has been for a long time. As I said, I'm not saying this for myself, but I know that there are people here, I know Greg has to get a babysitter, I like to see some of the younger people here, it can't just be retirees, or people can afford to do it, and Jeannie has to take off from work very frequently, it just, it says it's worth something. You know, we're going to come around to this discussion of the surplus, but we're talking about, we have 41, we have 40 or 41%. The county passed their budget, they have not quite 20% budget, they have the same surplus we do. Well, the reason I'm saying is, though, there's money, there's money, there's money to be had, so to say we have to make these small cuts, you people are laughing at me because I said, originally said, cut the flowers, this is about like cutting the flowers, and I know it's saying that we're doing something, but this is such a small amount, well, it'll come for, it'll come for a vote, but I just think, I think it is hurting, it does hurt people that stepping forward to do it, and as I said, you're all, if you want to give your money back, you can give your money back, and they'll help the budget, but they'll leave it up to the people to do it.
Just for a point, we get paid $200 a month. That's what our pay is right now. As long as I've been on council, it has been that. I don't know when, it's got to be over 12 years, it's been that, it was...
Jim, you were on earlier.
It's been at least 15 years at this pay. There has been no raises, and I know it's come up with previous council to make deductions as well. And I guess that's the council's decision, but $200 a month isn't a whole lot when you consider the time we put into it.
And if you can follow your...
Those of you that read the newspapers will see this question was asked by the media about where we feel on this, and so my stance is going to be printed in the paper. And when I gave that statement, it was on the idea of all or nothing, so whether we keep it as is with the current rate, or if we were to basically take zero. The 50% idea does kind of throw in a different twist to it that kind of changes my opinion on it, but I do stand by a lot of the statements that I made in my response to that question, that in order to find qualified candidates, you need to consider paying them. You know, we are here because we love the city, and we are here because we care, but for the risk and for the, I guess, the politics that we endure, that is, that is, it is difficult, and it's a weighing decision on me.
Yes, John.
Well, if we didn't get a raise for 15 years, if we didn't get a raise for 15 years, I think we donated a lot without a raise for 15 years. You know, I'm retired and stuff, I make sure I'm here because I'm an electoral official. It is a job. You don't, you lose a lot of time other place where you shouldn't be, so that's minimal vote we're paying for. And I think if we're just going to go after that little bit, there's places where we could cut a lot more than this from the city, which gives a big waste.
Does anyone else have any comment? The motion on the floor, Rocco, please. Will you review the motion, though, please?
Motion by Dornick, second by Rapp, to reduce the council pay for one half for the 2015 budget. Wilson.
No.
Rose.
Yes.
Keister.
No.
Schley.
No.
Dornick.
Yes.
Ziner.
Yes.
Gross.
No.
Dunleavy.
No.
Rapp.
Yes.
Steenbuck.
Same.
Or to five to one.
So did the motion carry? No, it failed. Motion failed. And then we're going to run, oh, pardon? Oh, yes, sorry. I was just going to say, we're moving on to the...
Very good. 2015 budget, that was obviously part of it, and it just wasn't already in there because it would have been included until that vote would have gone in there. Chuck, do you want to, highlights or comments, I guess?
Well, we're getting very close to having all the final numbers assembled, still working a day on that, as a matter of fact, but we'll be working on getting a printed budget out by the end of the week to the council. The finance committee is going to meet next week, Monday, at 6 o'clock, to go over it one last time and make a recommendation to the council on the budget. And the public hearing is next week, Tuesday, at 5:30, is it? 5:30 at the community center. We had to move the location because of the recall election being held here at City Hall, so ignore that, it's at the community center. Basically, I would say the last meeting of the finance committee this past Monday, we dealt with the major issues of how are we going to close this deficit we have between expenditures and revenues, and as you know, one concept of that is use of fund balance. I put a couple of other scenarios on the table. We brought back the issue of employee health insurance and some options there, and there actually was a recommendation by finance on that issue, I'll let Mark speak to that. We also talked about needing, if we need to accomplish that $175,000 or $180,000, it's going to take somewhere around, in terms of cuts, it's going to take somewhere around a 5% cut from all of the major departments. So you're talking police, fire, general government, public works, and parks. Each one of those departments, if they took a five, additional 5% cut in their expenditure budgets, we would, we'd be able to cover that fund balance amount of $175,000 to $180,000. And then, of course, there's the issue of the potential of closing facilities and saving the costs that it takes to run some of those operations that we've discussed in the past. So that's where we're at. Chairman, do you want to throw out the discussion we had about the fund balance use and how that might play into next year, the, for that early idea?
Couple of things. It was a recommendation of finance committee to put back in, what we referred to as scenario number one on the handout, that was a $500 contribution by the employee to the HSA, and that's it, everything else is stay the same. It was a modest, but it does represent $12,000 of value, of value to input or revenue plus expense, I'll be wanting to look at that. So that is in there as of right now.
Inliners concept.
Yeah, we had, we had, and maybe I'll let Phil speak in his own words, and then he tried to fumble through them, but we had several ideas discussed about what to do about the structural deficit, and several, not feel that we can put on a budget that has a danger of unbalanced. And Ziner had an idea at least worth considering, if I feel fortunate.
So as Mark had said, the philosophy, at least for me, of approving a budget with a structural deficit is unacceptable. However, we have a unique situation this year. The 5% cuts that it would take to bring our budget into balance, although it sounds very modest, would have enormous implications for our departments. And they're not to be taken lightly or to be blundered into quickly. So as much as I am against relying on fund balance, there is a, there is some caution that needs to be used when we're cutting. First, so that we understand the ripple effects. The chief has put together a very, I think, instructive document that illustrates that in how pulling one officer out looks favorable on paper from a budgeting standpoint, yet has enormous ramifications throughout the department, throughout the city. So we want to understand if we make a significant cut, what all the features of that will be. Second is that to accommodate those cuts, I think it's reasonable to say that the citizens would have to give up some level of service in some of those key areas. And from my perspective, it would be instructive and helpful to get more citizen input on what they feel the priority ought to be on services. All that being said, that takes time, and this is a process that, in all candor, should have really begun in the summer if it was going to be implemented on January 1st. That, of course, was not possible, so we're left to manage the situation as best we can. As an alternative to implementing the cuts immediately, we could look at a scenario where we set a deadline of 90 days or something of that nature, where we use the fund balance as a placeholder for the first three or four months of the year, while we investigate these with the department heads and get input from the citizens and from the business owners as to what services they feel like they'd be willing to sacrifice as part of balancing the budget, with the idea that on April 1st, whatever the date might be, the funding goes down to that 5% level, so that there would be a hard stop on the backfill to, essentially, we would buy some... as a placeholder for the first three or four months of the year while we investigate these with the department heads and get input from the citizens and from the business owners as to what services they feel like they'd be willing to sacrifice as part of balancing the budget. With the idea that on April 1st, whatever the date might be, the funding goes down to that 5% level. So that there would be a hard stop on the backfill to essentially, we would buy some time with a portion of the fund balance. But we would not rely on it from a structural standpoint and operations for the remainder of the 2015 year and nor would we have the expectation that it would have to be touched in the 2016 year because we would have made the cuts necessary to balance out with the projected levy. So that was the thinking behind it. It's just a suggestion. That being said, we, these decisions are major and the timeframe that we have is short.
I've been, I feel like I'm elected to represent my citizens and make the hard decisions. And I know, you know, we are going to have a public hearing, but we do get, you know, a small group of people and, you know, thankful that they come, but we don't really have a way of getting a lot of input other than each of us talking to our constituents. That being said, I, the fund balance, I started, alluded this before, that the county just passed a budget where their fund balance is the same as ours, 1.7 million for the whole county. And I think you were here when County Chairman Kepin came and told us that his budget is quadruple what ours is, yet they only have a 20, less than 20% fund balance. The school board just passed a budget, they have 9, they're going to try to get to 19. So we have been advised in the past, obviously, that this is very prudent, we don't touch the fund balance. We do have in front of us a listing of what the fund balance has been over the years and everybody can look at that. But we have been talking about some hard cuts here. The alternative, when Chuck presented to us, is, and we did come up with the idea of balancing and using the fund balance this time, the alternative is eliminating positions. And it really, the quick way to not use a fund balance would eliminate three managerial positions. And originally, Mr. Zeinerd had said that he favored eliminating, cutting salaries. Well, you know, we only have like five managers and to see any one of those go, and I know Mr. Rokas has given us a charge, you know, think about the people when you're balancing this budget. Well, even the $500 that we're going to ask each employee, that's a cut in salary if we make them pay the $500 on their insurance. So I'm saying looking out for the people and looking out for the positions, I see absolutely nothing wrong with using the fund balance, given the fact that we have a professional who has 30 years in the business who said, you have a wonderful fund balance, you know, this is, we're not in any danger. And I'm taking that as good advice, plus looking at what the school board and the county have. They don't have anything. Well, the county has the same as us for the fund balance and they have a huge, huge budget. The one thing I do want to ask about, and I appreciate Stephanie, you know, impassioned plea about the swimming pool, you know, but the thing is, we did, at one meeting, there was a vote, and I don't know what it was, if it was at financing, yet there were a lot of people here, I don't know what it was, but we voted and everybody said, well, for one year, given the swimming pool is only going to operate for one more year, they could limp along, we would close it this year. And then later, and there were some items in the paper that later there was a discussion, well, Justin McGauley had said, well, maybe we could limp along the five more years, you know, when we talked about that it was only going to go one year. But I see that saving, that $60,000 for one year, take that off the fund balance. But I think, you know, given that the city, the county is using their fund balance is the same as ours, the school board isn't concerned about 19%, I'm not concerned about it. I do not want to penalize employees and I do want to penalize services.
Yes, Greg.
I'm just looking for clarification from perhaps you, Mr. Schley, about the purpose of this item on our agenda. Are we looking to have full-blown budget discussions now or are we going to save that for another meeting? Perhaps this should have just been an update and we can save some of these discussions for our budget meeting in the future?
I didn't put this on the agenda. I think Mark may have. Yes, Mark?
I put this on, I just felt the more discussions we have, the more you're able, the more the public is able to hear about this. As far as future meetings, there are only two next Mondays unscheduled, previously unscheduled, finance committee meeting, I scheduled that yesterday. And then the, but the hearing the following day with potential budget adoption. Running out of time on the back end to get that done before our December deadline. So if you want to stop the discussions, that's fine. It was really just brought up to keep that discussion going.
So my, the second part on that would be, you know, that we could certainly talk about this for a long time and that was just my concern, was how long did we want to continue this? Not that it's not valuable. And to wrap it up from my opinion, I do like a lot of the things that Bill said about using the fund balance in the short term. I'm not in favor of running a structural deficit and we do have a lot of city services that are essential and we can't pull the rug out from under them or the employees in a quick fashion. So I also would be in favor of using the fund balance, but only, you know, in a short-term kind of sense. If it needs to go for the entire year, we, I would definitely say we got to look at some major structural changes in the next year so that we do not tap input to the depth that we are looking after this year.
A couple of things on the fund balance. You know, passing forward a structural deficit of operating by funding it through a fund balance is irresponsible. To use a fund balance to pay for larger capital things, say like a pool, or to build a bridge or buy a fire truck, things that are hundreds of thousands and spend it down on capital investments would be a more prudent use of that. I believe if we talked to our county board, they too used fund balance for quite some time. And the reason why it is at a low level is because they didn't want to make tough decisions and they spent it down to where it is until they got to the point where they had to make some tough decisions. So it wasn't that they chose to leave it down there, they spent it down to there.
I just have one question for Mark. The amount that we had to cut in order to get the, I'm going to call it the rebate from the state, are we still okay on that?
We're close.
Okay.
I do have a follow-up on that.
Yes.
So let's say we cut the pool out of $60,000 of operating, which would change our expenditure restraint program worksheet. What would it look like when we want to put it back in the following year or two years when we put it back in, now we're going to raise our operating? Would that blow us out of the water for our expenditure restraint?
Good. But I guess part of the question would be, is the operating cost going to be similar or more for a new facility because of, you know, size and what's involved or are there efficiencies that would reduce the cost? I don't really have answers to that.
I didn't mean to spring that one on you, but I just didn't think.
It could create a problem because you're, once you eliminate it, it's hard to bring back.
The way the expenditure restraint works, the way it works is you get a percentage that you can come back up each year based upon your equalized, your growth. And it's a formula, it's a three-page worksheet that we fill out. But you only get to come back a little bit each year. So if we go down a lot, we don't get to come back up a lot when we renew something.
Yes, Greg. Just a reminder, last year we didn't get the return because we didn't follow the restraint. So this year we're looking to get $90,000 back by restraining our spending. So we're already doing it if we would, and he's saying if we cut the pool, it might be too much to go down if we put it back. Well, it looks like, you know, Stephanie's talking about the pool wouldn't be going into operation for about four years, you know, with the funding, so I don't think that's a danger.
Does anyone else have any other comments? I guess I have one. I realize you don't want to go into the fund balance. And I can understand that. I'm looking at the fund balance that we received this sheet from '94 up till 2013, what our fund balances was. There were years it was down to $600,000. There was few years it was down that low.
2007, 2008?
Yeah, well, there it goes. Right now it's at 17, 1,751,000. If we take that hundred and eighty thousand that they're talking about, it would be down to 1,571. And I understand what Brad is saying about assets and stuff, to make sure this is cash or whatever. I guess our only alternative, our only alternative now, I'm sorry, our only alternative now is to lay people off or fire them or take furloughs. I don't see any more cuts in this budget. All the departments have cut. If you look at the budget from last year to this year and see what they're all down in all their departments, it's unbelievable. They did a great job of cutting, but to ask them to cut more would be inappropriate, I think. And like this document that Chief Lorch has given us, the ramifications of cutting the police department, we would be paying overtime and losing in the long run because we'd be hauling prisoners to OPACA and paying overtime rather than using our jail cells if we cut the dispatchers. We cannot use the jail cells because we won't have anybody in there. We have to maintain what we have, but the only alternative, if we do not use fund balance, is to close a pool, is to close a rec center. And I know this is, I'm not saying we're doing this, so don't get this in the media that I'm saying we're doing this like has been happening. I'm not saying we're doing this. This is what will happen. If we're going to do, close all these things, if we don't use the fund balance, that's what we're going to have to do and you need to face that. We need to cut employees if you don't want to use the fund balance. That's what we need to face. Do we want to cut employees? Do we want them to take furloughs? I mean, I know everyone's concerned and they're here, but this is what we're facing. And if you don't want to use the fund balance like you're suggesting, I don't know where else to go or what we can do. And that's all I have to say on there. Yes, Chuck?
I would just like to clarify this fund balance question because I think there's some misunderstanding, a lot of misunderstanding about what that really is. The city has about $4 million invested in various financial sources. It's invested in banks, it's invested in CDs, it's invested in a number of different places where it's making interest and not as much as it used to, unfortunately, because communities used to rely on interest for, actually for operating because it was a good source of revenue. That's not there anymore. But there's $4 million of basically liquid cash assets that are invested in banks and different CDs. Now, you know, you can't necessarily walk in tomorrow and grab 2 million of that, but there are interest penalties to be paid if you use some of it. And it's all different sources at all different interest rates. $1.7 million of that $4 million is what's classified as undesignated fund balance. In other words, it's not committed to anything, any other use in the village or in the city. And so it is a liquid asset, it is cash. It's not a, it's not ghost. It's a cash, it's not a, it's not a building, it's not something you have to sell, it's part of our investments that the city has. And so I'm not, you know, want to promote necessarily the spend down of that, but the fact is, is that it was the savings that the departments and your department heads made over the years in budgets that built that up. So it's money that residents and taxpayers of the community have paid, have paid to build that balance. And I'm, again, I will repeat that I am comfortable, very comfortable with the level you will still have if some of that funds or the $180,000 those funds are used. I don't believe the city's going to be in any danger. You're going to have more than enough remaining liquid assets in case of a problem developing. But certainly that is not the first-line decision you always, you want to make in terms of using, you know, your bank account. None of us like to do that. I mean, we have savings for reasons. But it is, it is cash. It's not some oaky pokey number that's not available. It's there and it's available for use if the community feels that that's the best approach for meeting your needs. And so that's why we've presented that as an alternative and we've presented other alternatives. And quite honestly, I support the recommendation that Alderman Zeinerd has made. I think that's, would be a wonderful approach. It's, you know, it's not making the hard decision in the next two weeks, but it's requiring a hard decision in the next three to four months. And I think it would allow some time for department heads to, you know, put better ideas together and some analysis. As Alderman said, it's going to give time for the public to weigh in on different options. And so I think, I think it is a good approach. And quite frankly, in the first three months of the year, you're not going to need to use the fund balance to begin with. I mean, it's plugged a hole in the budget, so we have a balanced budget, but you're not going to end up spending it because you wouldn't spend that till the end of the year. And you may never even spend the whole amount. Many, many years, as I've mentioned in the past, there's been $60,000 or $90,000 of fund balance applied to your city budget to balance the budget and it was never touched. Your department heads and departments were able to save money in their expenses in the course of operating those years and the money, the fund balance was never touched. And I don't know that we'd be quite that lucky with this large amount because that's, you know, that's considerably more than $60,000 or $80,000. But it still would not be touched until the end of the year, until you found out if you actually needed it. So, but I just want to make it clear, I do support the Alderman's proposal and I don't think, finance didn't make a recommendation on that yet, did they? Haven't? I believe that'll be, that'll take place on Monday. They'll debate this again and that decision will be made on Monday, so.
Any other questions on those budget matters? Street Committee?
Item 9A, Madam Chairman. The Street Committee has voted to authorize the Public Works Director to seek bids for purchase of excess recycled material. I so move.
I'll second.
Rest of the street material?
Oh, okay.
Is it blacktop and concrete?
Roll call please. Rose?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Dornick?
Yes.
Zeinerd?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Steenbuck?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Item 9C. Street Committee has announced a vote to put Adams' small engine, the sidewalks, snow and ice removal bits, and I so move.
Second. Any other comments? Roll call please. Easter?
Yes.
Schley?
Yes.
Dornick?
Yes.
Zeinerd?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Steenbuck?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Item 9C. The Street Committee has announced a vote to allow the snowballing bits to Kirsten Trucking. I so move.
Second. Any other comments or questions? Yes?
Just to make an acknowledgement that this was solicited for bids and Kirsten Trucking was the only bidder on the process, but it was done openly. And I know that there's public concern, you know, about the fact that... And I know that there's public concern, you know, about the fact that Toby is working here with the city and so forth. So this was done totally open and honest and there should be no cause for concern.
I was going to ask that. Thank you. They were the only bid. Good to know. Okay. Um, roll call please. Schley?
Yes.
Dornick?
Yes.
Zeiner?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Steenbuck?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Last two items, Madam Chair, the wastewater on-call pay issue has been deferred to utility for review.
Okay.
And Item F, the discussion of transferring wastewater oversight responsibility to the utility board, no actual mistake. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are you just going to be putting that back on next month or?
Let's say yes, did we discuss a joint?
Yes. Okay. That's good.
I think we probably ended up with a joint, utility board and.
Street and utilities.
Okay. Then we will move on to Utility Board on call pay and I guess that's been referred to a committee, so that we can discuss that next month's meeting when we have a court meeting. Vacation policy, if that exists.
Yes, Greg. I had a question, that there was nothing in the vacation policy that said that vacation cannot be carried. That's in our, our ordinances, but I wonder if it should be on there too. No holdover, no holdover. I think it's in the ordinances, but it's, you know, maybe it should be noted on here just.
Well, this was actually passed, but never implemented. That we actually, from the July 8th meeting. Yeah, this was actually passed July 8th meeting that the department head.
Has been yet.
Processed. So, do we have to read? No, this is, John, it's just informational. Depends what this section I know is referring to, yes. Vacation policy, personnel. And this is what we approved in July 8th. This is just informational, isn't it?
This was just to make sure this is correct because it was never put in writing?
But this is what we voted on at that meeting. Correct? So do we have any discussion, anyone?
G?
Yes.
So just for clarification, it was voted on, but was not put in writing, by writing you mean into the employee handbook?
Yes.
I don't believe the staff that affected ever received anything. So staff was never directed, so staff was just asking.
Okay, so.
A clarification.
All right. So we voted in something and then we never took proper action on it, so.
It never followed through.
It never got followed through, yes, so.
We took action on it that night.
Yeah.
We adopted this, but then it never, it wasn't even sent there. So now it just needs to be applied directly?
And, and those that it applies to need to.
See it.
See it in real.
Otherwise it's just informational and you're going to take care of getting it filed? Correct, okay. It's just informational and it will get filed in appropriate places and I'm glad someone kept a copy of it. Thank you, April. Then we will move on to Appointments, Housing Special Committee. I'm not sure if that's about.
Yes, the Housing Special Committee.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Then we will proceed to go into closed session.
I move we adjourn into closed session. First went to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, France 1, France G, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility slash a interim electric manager position interim consideration wages. Wastewater manager position interim consideration wages, utility accountant position interim considerations, may reconvene in open session for possible action. Who would you like included?
Brian? You're staying, correct?
You said you'd like, yes.
Brian Hellickson will be staying for part of it, yep. And Chuck, April, Peggy, Chief Lorge. Is there anyone I'm missing, folks?
Oh, no.
Are you going to read one?
You wrote B.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Um. Al? Okay, okay. Al's up on the clock.
Adjourn into closed session. First went to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, wanting to confer legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is likely is or likely to become involved with regard to return of missing city property, may reconvene into open session for possible action. And who would you like included in that?
I. Chuck? Yeah. Attorney, April, Dunleavy, Peggy, and Chief Lorge.
Adjourn to closed session. First went to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, France 1, France G, considering with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved in, first went to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, France 1, France G, debilitating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session. Tip three, project utility work and expenditures, may reconvene into open sessions if possible. And who would you like included?
Well, that's one we need Brian in for. B, I'm going to strike Brian on the first one and put him in on this one, the utility. Oh, you just put the tip three one? Yeah. We're not going in, no. Tip three would just be Peggy, Chuck, April, and Chief Lorge.
So move.
We have one more. Should we read them all?
Did I miss one?
Six B.
Okay. Adjourn into closed session. First went to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, France 1, France G, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Education and pay reimbursement for public finance manager may reconvene into open session for possible action.
Then we have Chuck, April, Dunleavy, Peggy, and Chief Lorge. No, I think that doesn't have to be this one. I think we got them in. So move.
I'll second that.
Can I go on a little break? Roll call please. Dornick?
No.
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Dunleavy?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Steenbuck?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Schley?